I'd like to call to order the Hoppin and zoning board meeting for, what is today?
Twenty second.
For April twenty second. So we have petition one, which is continued hearing for petition for dimensional variance filed by Courtney Cahill on behalf of herself, the mailing address of twenty-one Yells Lane, Rockville, Rhode Island, zero two eight seven three, for property owned by Courtney Cahill and Jermaine Ger, located at twenty-one Yells Lane, Rockville, Rhode Island, zero two eight seven three, and identified as Assessor Platt sixteen, Lot eleven, RFR eighty zone, and filed in accordance with section nine of chapter one thirty-four of the zoning ordinance of the town of Hoppin as amended. Does not look like the applicant is present again. Do we have anybody in the audience that's based on this application? Gentlemen, what would you like to do with this? We've been kicking this for several months. Have we heard from her?
No, I called her yesterday and left her voicemail and asked her to give me a call if she could not attend or if she didn't have her butter, and they did not hear from her.
Was that the same, was it last month that she responded from la- to last month?
February was the last month that she responded.
So.
I think we've given her ample time.
So, should we?
I think you have a couple options you can, she's already had sufficient notice that if you want to, if you want to double down on the notice, send her a letter saying that it will be dismissed with prejudice of the next meeting. Or you can, and that means that she'll be concluded from filing for a year, or or you can, you can dismiss it tonight, whether without prejudice. It's entirely your choice.
So, so my thoughts would be just to dismiss it without prejudice and allow her to reapply, and we'll just start the process again when she gets her ducks in her row. I don't see any point in penalizing her just because she hasn't made it. It would be nice if she would follow through with communication, but I don't want to make assumptions. Everybody's in a crazy world right now, so I don't know if you guys agree with that.
I agree with that. I was thinking that earlier.
Agreed. Chip, how are you feeling on that?
I agree. I think we should, although to say I didn't really hear the first option very, very well, I agree with what you just said.
The first option was to dismiss with prejudice, which would prohibit her from reapplying for a year. I don't, I don't think that there's, there's not really a reason to penalize her that way. I think she just had a hard time getting a biologist out there, and you know, we are in the COVID world and everything else, so this is just a screwy time to try and be doing these projects.
Yeah, I agree with what you've said then. I think it should be without prejudice. Is that what the option was?
Yep, yep. So with that being said, can I entertain a motion to that effect? So move, so move. You got a second out there, anybody?
Second.
All right, we'll get Dan for a second. Any more discussion on that?
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice, correct. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go, all right. So she can reapply, if maybe we'll start again. All right, so now we're gonna move on to petition two, which is determine, I thought we already did that, didn't we? Are we in the hearing phase?
Hearing phase.
We're in the hearing phase.
Did I not see this?
No. So we're here for, that's okay, for hearing on a petition for a special use permit filed by Edward and Giulietta Sherman with mailing address of one sixty-three Canal Street, Wesley, Rhode Island, zero two eight nine one, on behalf of themselves, for property owned and located at one sixty-five Ashway Road, Bradford, Rhode Island, zero two eight zero eight, identified as Assessor Platt lot four. It's in an RFR eighty zone and filed in accordance with section eight C and ten of chapter one thirty-four of the zoning ordinance of the town of Hoppin as amended. So we have Mr. Sherman here tonight. So we're gonna have you step up to the mic and identify yourself, because we've got some people on the virtual world that would love to, yeah, there's some people on the computer there that are listening. So, Tiana, you wanna? Yeah, you know the swear man?
Yeah.
I don't know if we've done that with you, have we?
No.
No, make your best attempt. I think we all know what it means.
If you can raise your right hand, and I actually have it, and I told you, can I go really far?
Jim. Tiana hasn't had to do this yet, so good practice one. Sorry, I put you on the spot.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you share shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
So identify yourself for the record.
I'm Lucie Sherman.
Okay, there we go. So now, so what are we, what are we doing? You're proposing?
Put green on something.
Adding them on the greenhouse?
Yeah, in storage. All it is, is like a little box with a cover on it, put some pots and stuff in it.
We've got some maps, which I don't think, I don't think that the people online are able to see it. Playing it somewhere.
The little back one, right in front of you.
Oh, that one, that big one, okay. You've got your many ones still there.
Just from my perspective, in the last meeting, I just remembered that we were required to have a stamp on it, so I'll trust that if everyone that can see the maps verifies that the maps are stamped, then I'm good.
Chip, so what, last meeting, we were asking about the survey of stamps, the survey of stamps for A checklist and also on G, the separate site plan. Did you, did you get an updated map?
Where is that?
Oh, I did.
Oh, okay.
Tony, do you have the updated map?
I don't.
Did you see the updated map?
I did not.
We gave it to Sherry.
But you did.
Next day, yeah.
They didn't put it in my pocket.
Yeah, it's got a stamp, a signature on it?
I did not receive that.
I did not see it. You gave it to Sherry.
Yeah, I don't like to share it, and I think it was somebody.
And I could run over you off, we can verify that later.
Just, well, it's hard, it's hard to approve the checklist without having verification. Tony, could you give Sherry a call, see if she's available, just if she had her eyes on it?
Yeah, if she can tell me where it is, I can run down there and get it.
All right, so we're, we're gonna be delayed a minute just to get verification on, on this item. Actually, you want to move on to the other ones? What was the other, the other outstanding? The same thing, the stamp on the separate site plan I had marked. Okay, so all right, so.
Sherry, Ted Sherman, he dropped off a, a site plan that was scanned to you. Do you remember that? You know where it is. I went back to the office to get it. I'll take it. No, I'm gonna head down there now. All right, just keep your phone on, I'm gonna head down and try to find it and bring it back to the board. Hold on one second. She, Sherry thought that it went, ended up going into your pack, the packet that went up to you. I don't.
I never got anything even up.
So what I'm gonna do is I'll take a ride down there and try to find it. Just keep your phone on. All right. Okay, fine. I shall return in the proper set.
You guys want to entertain conditionally approving the checklist based on Tony bringing that back stamp?
I'd make a motion.
Okay, can we get a second on that? Sorry, did we catch up with that, Dan?
Go ahead.
Jumped again. You got a second?
I'll second that.
All right, just a second. Any discussion on that? Good? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, all right, so let's, let's move forward. All right, so it looks like you're, you're proposing, you've got an eighteen by forty-eight greenhouse in the center rear of the property?
Yeah, it's right next to the other houses.
And then you've got a twenty by twenty-one storage building proposed also? All right, that's, that's to the right of it, which would be, what is that to the?
It's near the shed anymore, it's to the shed there. It's gonna be the whole neighborhood shed.
Okay.
It's not, it's probably not gonna be that, it's gonna be smaller.
All right, so the greenhouse is gonna be the same style as what's already out?
Yeah, the storage thing is gonna be a little smaller.
All right, and that's? The storage building, is that gonna be like stick framed, or is it? Oh, it's gonna be, all right.
You know what I mean?
Almost like a carport or something?
Yeah, similar, yeah. But I don't know if I own one, because it's a water front, it has, you know, stairs and houses, right?
Okay. Yeah, yeah. So the, and the greenhouse is for obviously your grown plants, right? Storage sheds for storage. All right, so is the, the public gonna have access to this, this area? Now, so this is all just gonna be for you and your employees? You're not gonna sell out of, out of either, either building? I think we had discussed that the pre-app, was it the first two greenhouses, those are the ones customers going, the first couple?
Yes.
Okay, all right, but none, none of that stuff in the rear? And I know we had past restrictions on the lot, so you're not, you're not extending these into that back envelope where you're not supposed to put any structures, right? Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay. You guys have any other questions on it?
Any lighting, any?
Yes, any power, any out there, no?
And fans.
Fans.
Someone's got a fan, so you know, the girl.
So, yeah, well, regulated temperature, yeah. Yeah, it's propane thing. So no lights, any exterior lights on it? No?
There won't be anybody in there for the night time.
All right, no, I just know in the past that the, you know, neighbors had problems with the lights affecting their, their house and stuff, so I just wanted on the record if we're gonna have lighting or anything on it.
And just kind of like for back business, the, when we approved the, a couple of years ago, the expansion, I think it was Ogrydys planned along that line, is that, that's all kind of taken old and good?
Yeah, I even put them on the other side, just to make sure that we have extra for more.
So in terms of neighbors next door to the, kind of the right-hand side of you, they would have no, this is not gonna impede there, they're not even gonna see what's going on.
I actually talked to Ron in Canada.
Okay. How, how tall is the greenhouse?
Same as the one that's in Honda Garden.
Does it give a height on the ground?
It just, it wasn't there.
Does it give a height on the ground?
Ten, twelve foot high.
Yeah, I don't see a height, but that's about.
I mean, I can do it, I can almost touch the top, that's all.
There's no real, there's no foundation, just anchors to that? Really? Right, yeah, okay. So you're not, you're not changing any of the other landscape or anything with this? This, this, it looks like this is in between other structures that are there.
It's gonna block one of the ones in front of it pretty much, and then one that's turned down and it's all.
It looks like you have a small shed to the east of it, to the right, and then you've got a larger greenhouse to the left. All right, so these are gonna be nestled in between? That's right, I said nestled. Very comforting word.
I'll put that in the notes.
Okay, you don't have to. My comedy routine, it's never ending. Yes. It looks, I mean, we don't have any, it's within all the setback requirements. So we're just, we're just looking for an expansion of a non-conforming use, correct? You guys have any other questions, Dan? Nothing. Chip, you have any questions on it?
No, I think that's the only thing that, so when you just said this was an expansion of a non-conforming use, does that mean, is that property, and this, you know, I'm just, this is just out of curiosity, is that property not zoned commercial or whatever?
Yeah, it's, it's our eighty zone, I believe. Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's rural farm residential, which is the most, probably one of the more common zones we have in town. So it doesn't really allow for new commercial businesses such as this, so it's what we'd call a grandfather use.
Yep, yep.
When there's alterations to that use, depending on what it is, he'd come in to get a special use, we'd make sure that it was conforming with that use, that he's not expanding it, you know, too much to where it's gonna upset neighbors. It's just, just to put our eyes on it, to make sure things don't get out of hand, basically, it's just a.
Yeah, yeah. It sounds like that even the, his proposed use is, it sounds like it's actually within the footprint and the confines of the existing non-conforming use, you know, so that sounds okay to me.
All right, I don't, I'd prefer Tony to get back in here, see if he has any comments. I don't wanna, well, let's, why don't we reach out to the public? If there's anybody there that would like to speak? Do you have anybody present that would like to speak? Because we have, we have two ladies in the audience.
I'm the only neighbor that came tonight, and I have no objection.
Okay, could you? Could you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sharon Bridge, I'm the abutting neighbor in the back of this property. We own a big field that runs the length of the back of this property, as well as, is the budding neighbor.
Yeah, so actually, so if we could have Ted step away from the podium, we're gonna have you come over here and swear you in, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I got, I got carried away, a little discombobulated.
All right, if you can raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you share shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Okay, and identify yourself again.
My name is Sharon Bridge, I live at twenty-nine Hull Road. Our property blocks the back of Ted's property, and we have no objection to what he wants to do. It's tough enough for business people in the pandemic to make a living and to make so many changes, so we congratulate him on his improvement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to speak? Yep, come on up, we're gonna make you do the same thing. Hi, new neighbor.
I'm happy, we need to happen, I'm happy to do something.
Okay, hang on a sec. Tiana's gonna sway you in too. That's okay.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you share shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Okay, now identify yourself, your name is?
My name is Elizabeth Oskari, and I'm the president.
Could you spell your last name? See if Tiana got all that. Okay, all right, sorry.
I have no objection, I'm very happy he's doing something, doing a wonderful job, and I wish I could help him, you know. I can, no objection whatsoever.
Okay.
But I'm happy finally we started open America, so congratulations, please. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
I hope, good luck. Thank you, sir.
Okay, now we'll reach out to our virtual audience. Who do we have there, Tiana?
It looks like Karen Lees, and we am.
Okay, would Karen Alu like to speak? They have their hands up at all? No?
Well, Karen does.
I knew Karen would.
All right, Karen, if you want to unmute yourself, go first.
Hi, Karen.
Hi.
This is, this is John. Tiana's gotta sway you in again.
You know, I can't see your right hand.
Raise your virtual hand.
Virtual hands up.
Okay, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you share shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I swear.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so can you identify yourself?
Sure. Karen Lees, and I live at one seventy-one Ashway Road, Bradford.
Thank you.
Ron and I are both here. What? I'm sorry, John?
The floor is yours, go ahead.
Oh, it's fine. Ron and I are both here. Just, I spoke with Sherry, and Ronnie has spoken with Ted, and we've just, you know, verified what he said he was gonna do, and no problem. The only question, I was just wondering, lots of times, he has, you know, deliveries out back, the big tech kills, I don't know how they do it, but they get in over there and they back up. I just wondered if they still have ample room to do that.
All right, so, so Corinne asked if you'd still have room for your, for the trucks that are delivering material to go around on the back. To me, it appears so, because that's not really an area where you receive the material. It's, so Corinne, I don't know that, you don't really have the plan in front of you?
I don't, no.
So the last greenhouse he has towards the back, which is towards the neighbor's property, on the opposite side of the property?
Right.
Looking to put one more greenhouse of the similar size to the one that's there next to it, closer to your property, but it's central to the lot?
Yeah, that's what he told Ron. That's fine. He took Ronnie and showed him, yeah.
Yeah, and then to the right of that, again, closer to your lot, but still central, between that and the little shed, he's gonna, he's gonna put another storage shed.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. You asked about the lights and stuff, so that, that's all good.
Has everything been better out there lately?
Yes, yes, it has. I, I think he's making every effort to do what you have asked of him.
All right, that's terrific.
Yeah, so I appreciate it, and, you know, it's good to be where we're at, and wish him well. It seems to be okay.
All right, everything kosher over there, Ted? It's all good, good? No, I'm happy to hear that.
Yeah.
I don't like any, either of you having headaches, and it's good when neighbors get along.
Absolutely, we agree.
So that's terrific. Is there anybody else there that would like to, sorry, Corinne, are you done?
I am, I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Go take care.
The other fellow have their hand up at all, or they just listen, just listening?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I entertain, we take about a ten-minute recess till the zoning official gets back?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, we're gonna wait for Tony to get back, and then we can, we can move along. Can I have our motion to re-adjourn? So move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we do, we have a copy of our site plan that's now been confirmed, that's stamped by the engineer. Thank you, Tony, for doing all the legwork. We, so Tony, while you were away, we heard testimony from all the neighbors. They were all in favor. Even ones in the past that have had issues are in favor right now with the way things are proposed.
All the neighbors who chose to participate?
Well, that's true.
Not all the neighbors.
Thank you. All the neighbors that chose to participate. Ted gave his testimony on what he'd like to do with the, with the shed and the, the greenhouse. Do you have any comments or anything you'd like to add? I want to just give you a chance to put anything on the record.
No, as long as he follows the approved site plan and the board's recommendations, I'm fine with it.
Okay. All right, man. The board like to add any, anything?
I can just say something real quick.
Go ahead, Chip.
You know, I know that zone changes and zoning in general can be difficult in this town, especially in circumstances like this, where they're not, you know, they're, they're, they're incongruent zone, you know, activities, but I think this is a good activity. I like the way the plan is trying to stay within the existing bounds, and I also think it's consistent, relatively consistent with the comprehensive plan and the, and trying to maintain the rural character of this town. So I like, I think when we think about business activities like this, I, I think this is a good one, and I know that's, maybe some people, you know, may not agree with it, but I, I think that this is a good activity, so I'm, I'm happy to approve this.
Okay. All right, thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna go through findings of fact here, and Joe, a little ammunition for us. You got them all?
All ready to go.
All right, fire them out there.
All right.
I move that after due consideration, the zoning board makes the following findings of facts in regards to this special use permit application. The new structure is a proposed eighteen by forty-eight greenhouse centered in the rear of the lot. The other new structure proposed is a twenty by twenty-one hoop house storage shed. There is no public access to the greenhouse or the hoop, or the hoop house, and there's no sales from these greenhouses. The only power run out there is for cooling fans and for propane heaters, to run the heaters when the, when it gets chilly, and that we have testimony from three abutting neighbors that have no objections. Okay, any other findings, fellas? No, I think the applicant wants to say something.
I wanna, I'm trying to think, I wanna put the house as close as I can to the other house, you know what I mean? Because you don't want them too far apart. Usually put them like a couple feet up. You guys keep saying, I need you all.
No, yeah, well, yeah, well, yeah, we're just, we're, Joe's just clarifying that it's in the center of the buildable area of your lot. It's, yeah, within the setback, so you're not, you're not approaching any, any bounds.
I just want to.
Prefer your site plan.
Yes, yes, prefer the site plan, because the lot is much longer than where the, where the structures are. It's, there's a dogleg that goes out to the back, and this is in the, the rear center portion of the lot. So we have people online that can't see the site plan, so we're trying to verbalize where, where it is. It's, it's going to be to the east side next to the last greenhouse you have in, in the rear. I think that's what Joe's trying to say with, I'll add a million words to make the same point.
Site plan is part of the public record, so anybody can come and see it.
Yep, right, yep. So any other findings of fact you want to add, guys? Nope, I, I think I'm good with those myself. All right, so that, Joe made that a motion for findings of fact. Would somebody entertain a second on that? All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We have no proposed conditions? We're all, everybody set?
No, I don't see any conditions on this one.
Just a, sorry, quick point here. In the last meeting, I don't know if this counts as a condition, but I just bring it up, the last meeting, we said if there were to be, in accepting the waiver for the traffic study, we did say that if there were any future expansions, there would have to be a traffic study, so I don't know if that pertains as a condition here or not.
I think we deal with it at that time, if, if the proposal to do something different.
Okay.
Merits at that point. I don't, I wouldn't want to condition it prematurely.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure that.
Yep, that's fine. We're waiting on Joe here for a second, and when he's ready, he can fly. So with that, I'll move that, based on the findings of fact, I move that the zoning board finds that the proposed use will be compatible with the neighboring use, and will adversely, and so will not adversely affect the surrounding neighbors' use and enjoyment of their property. All right, that was a motion. We got a second out there? Dan's second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Based on the findings of fact, I move that the zoning board finds that the proposed use will be environmentally compatible with the neighboring properties and their properties and the protection of their property values. Dan, any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Based on the findings of fact, I move that the zoning board finds that the proposed use will be compatible with the orderly growth and development of the town, and will not be environmentally, environmentally detrimental therewith. That's hard to say. It is. Got a second, Dan, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Based on the findings of fact, I move that the zoning board finds that the proposed special use serves the purpose of this ordinance and the comprehensive plan for the reasons previously stated. We got a second from Dan. Any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Based on the findings of fact, I move that the zoning board finds that the proposed use will be compatible with the best practices and procedures to minimize the possibility of any adverse effects on neighboring properties, the town, the environment, all of which includes consideration for soil erosion, water supply protection, septic disposal, wetland protection, traffic limitation, and safety and circulation. Second, Dan, any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So, based on the previously stated findings of fact, the testimony heard and documents received, the board moves that the applicant has demonstrated to the satisfaction of the board of review by legal competent evidence that the proposed use is in keeping with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Lastly, I move that the zoning board finds that based on the previous findings of fact, that we approve this special use permit. Any discussion?
Yeah, just briefly, Ted, I'll say for the record that my support of the approval of the special use permit hinges entirely on the support you got from your neighbors. Because of the difficulties that you encountered in the past, the ability to overcome that work with your neighbors and actually have them come in support of your application, because it wasn't just that they weren't objecting, it's that you actually had people speaking in support of it. So for those reasons, and I support small, I support all businesses in the town. So it's for that reason you have my vote.
What's that? All right. So we were at, yep, that's, that's, any more discussion?
Sorry.
Thank you. No, I need the reminder. All right, good. Chip, you have anything to add? Good?
Nothing good.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, you're all set. Yeah, thank you from the board for working things out with the neighbors. Doing what you're supposed to. Thanks, Ted. Good luck with the season.
Good luck, Ted.
All right, so we have minutes for this board. You have minutes? You have minutes here somewhere, right?
Yeah.
I got a couple months minutes. Yeah, yes. All right, I make a motion that we accept the zoning board of review meeting minutes from March 18th, 2021. Second. Any discussion on those?
Say that again.
I make a motion that we accept the zoning board of review meeting minutes from March 18th, 2021. Approved, yeah, all right.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Chip, okay?
Yep.
Yep, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Minutes are approved. I don't think there was anything else. I got to ratify last month's. Yep. Do you have something that you want me to sign in a minute? In the past, I've signed to ratify. Yeah, there's certainly going to be some evidence. Do you approve the?
I don't know.
Actually, I think we will. The past attorneys were doing it. Which you can, if you want email, Tony, I can. I'll take, all right, so that'll be ratified. All right, so any other discussion, guys? Chip, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, entertain a motion with your name. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. 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 All right, guys, have a good night. Take care.